You don't want to be on the recording for any reason. Feel free to turn off your camera, but we love seeing your faces. Nice to see you all. For those of you who were with us over the last, well, the last two academic years, this is a familiar sight of the gathering on Zoom. For those of you who are newer to our community, welcome to our town hall meeting. During, in the early days of pandemic, we gathered in this fashion really every day for a long time. And there was so much news and things were moving so fast that it felt very important to touch base. And as you'll see, we'll use a similar format tonight. We do a lot of updates and we try to answer questions that anyone has. We're going to kind of go around the building a little bit in the Zoom room to get updates from different departments. If you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to put in the chat, feel free to do that. Ben Myers is with us. Ben is my partner in crime in these town hall settings. And he'll help monitor the chat and any questions that come up. So I'll start by just giving you a brief update on a few things. Starting with just where we are in the semester. So we're in the sixth week of the semester in our third year, our third academic year of pandemic. And you think about that, you know, it's been 18 months of pandemic. And yet we're, this is our third academic year of dealing with this. So we, we've had a remarkable, I'm not going to knock on the wood, really good track record of safety on campus even prior to becoming a vaccinated community. The fact that we are a vaccinated community gives me a lot of breathing room and confidence in our ability to remain safe. We have had some community members experience breakthrough cases during the fall. The total of five that we've recognized, four of them were folks that spent some pretty significant time on campus the day of their diagnosis or the day before. And the good news is we did lots of testing afterwards and no one caught COVID. And that was true pre-vaccination. It's true now. The safety measures that we are taking really seem to be working. So we've got this sort of layered approach to safety, starting with our ventilation system. We'll complement all kinds of fresh air into the building. Where we've upgraded our filtration systems. Of course, we're vaccinated and we're wearing masks. And all of those things require a lot of work by a lot of people, including our view. And they really do contribute to creating, you know, as safe a place as we can be if we're going to be with people during a pandemic. So I did get a couple of questions about COVID stuff prior to the start of the town hall. And I'll try to answer them now because they're on topic. So the first question that I got was when will the mask mandate end at Albany Law School? There's some hope that we won't have to wear masks always. We are following the guidance of the CDC. And the CDC has done well for us thus far. The CDC has said that where there's high community spread and we've got a fourth left of figuring it out indoor masks are required for indoor spaces for most of the time or should be required. So we will continue to watch that. Albany still has a pretty high rate of community spread of COVID and Delta related in particular. And so, so for now, we're going to continue with it and it's working. And I do want to thank all, everybody, faculty, staff and students for their cooperation on this. We do see some incidents of people forgetting or nosy showing. And we need to remind each other when that happens. We know that, that the mask does add that additional layer of protection. And we, we need to just kind of stand guard about that and protecting the most vulnerable among us. You also may have seen there's, there are signs all around the building. All of a sudden I say, saying, ask me about your symptoms. And someone asks why that's going on. And the reason is that the HEROES Act has been invoked in New York State right now. So those of you who were with us last year or the year before, know that we did a daily health screen on your phone. You get a text to answer some questions. It was linked to the, your swipe of cards to get in. We are, because of the HEROES Act, we need to do some kind of daily health screening. And we decided to do it this way at each of the entrances to ask you to ask yourself, do you have any of these symptoms? And if you do, please do not come onto campus. Please go home. Kind of HR, we're walking through when to get a test for COVID. It's another layer of protection. So it's really important and I know that it's confusing. I mean, we all have had colds and flus or sniffles. Better safe than sorry. It's the couple of breakthrough cases that we have seen have been with people who had very minor symptoms, but did take the precaution of going and getting tested and remaining off campus. And so it is really important that we adhere to that. Another question that I received was about the, the safety committee and events. And what is going on with all of that? So I got a question from a student who asked about the mission of the public safety committee. Is it to keep students and faculty members safe or is it the community as a whole? And the answer is really that it's, our mission is to keep the law school community safe. And the safety committee was formed early in the pandemic, particularly once we started coming back on campus. And we realized that every decision that we made has implications across the community. So that a decision about, you know, walking one way in halls, which was something we did at one point, has implications for the physical plan and has implications for student traffic and for classes and perhaps how it works. So the committee has, has representatives from across the, across the institution. And we follow public health advice and do our very best to make decisions and make policy where we can that can be easily followed. Admittedly, it's a bit of a work in progress and, and things change. We had a discussion today about members amongst members of the safety committee that had different interpretations of one of our rules. So, so sometimes that does happen when we, when we run into one of those situations. We'll clarify and we'll get back to the, with community to give the most clear advice that we can. The most clear guidance. The, the second question from the particular student was about events. And when do, when, when do proposals have to go to the safety committee if you want to do an event on campus? Or an event off campus? And what if you want to invite outsiders? So I thought I'd just kind of go through that and see if that's helpful for folks. So events on campus are allowed. We're here every day. You're on classes every day. You're all gathering with each other. And, and we are, we have proof of everybody's vaccine status or the testing if they have an exemption. And we all can gather with one another. So those kind of events work the way that they worked pre-pandemic. If you're a student planning an event, go to Andrea Rosari and student affairs. And she'll start the process and you have to go through the room reservation system and all of that. If your event is going to involve outside people, Andrea's going to take a look. We are allowing currently, in order to sort of limit any chance of, of spread on campus. We're allowing student groups and others, faculty and staff to invite up to 10 visitors to campus. All of those visitors will either need to show proof of vaccination status or proof of a very recent 72 hour or less negative COVID test and, and follow all the masking rules and, and whatnot. Generally, those kind of proposals, if it's 10 or less, are not going to have to go to the safety committee. We're just going to make sure that there's a plan for checking the vaccination status. So an individual group can do it, confirm and give a list to security or give names to security and ask security to do the checking of the status. If the event is, is going to be inside, we have to follow all the rules with respect to food. So we've limited where food, where, where people can eat. And I'll explain a little bit about the thinking behind that. The, there is, there are different uses of spaces in the building. For classroom space, people have to go to classes where they're assigned, whether you're a faculty member or you're a student. And we have all seen throughout the pandemic that, that there's sort of a spectrum of comfort. Some people are much more comfortable being in a room with other people than other people are. And some people are very extremely careful about their safety or that of their families and feel very uncomfortable being in a place where people have been without masks. And so since we require people to go to the classrooms, we're really treating the classrooms as sacred. It's probably too big a word, but as safe spaces where we're not allowing food. If a faculty member says it's okay, there can be drinking, but they're under a mask. But we're not allowing the events like we used to where we all hung out and, you know, ate pizza together in the classrooms. Because we want to keep those spaces as safe as possible for those folks who really need that level of safety. But we are allowing, people need to eat. So we are allowing eating in the cafeteria, in the, in the foyers, places that can be avoided that are better. That are different. You're not sitting in those places for long periods of time, whether you want to or not. So the events, if there's a request for food, then the, the answer is going to be you can have the food. They have to have it either in the cafeteria. And because your people will be taking off masks while they're eating, we're, we're using capacity limits in the cafeteria. So, so that is a limitation on, on events that I think all of us would love to see lifted. But right now we can't. So that, that continues to be a limit. If they're going to be, if there's going to be an event outside, then because we're a vaccinated community, people could eat outside and we don't really have to worry about the capacity limits in the same way. But if a student group wants to, or any group wants to invite more than 10 people, that will probably get sent on to the safety committee. Because we need to really be sure that there's a good system for checking vaccination status and that we're not bringing risk onto campus. So I hope that explains the, the thinking. I'm happy to take specific questions. Feel free to put them in the chat or send them to Ben if you have additional questions about events. One of the questions was about off-campus events. You know, people, you're all going off campus and doing stuff off campus and we can't control you. But where the law school is paying for the event and is sending our people and our staff out, off-campus events still need to, to go through, probably go through the safety committee. Because you're probably having an off-campus event in a way that's going to bring together more people than, than you would if you were just doing it on campus. So there is a bit of, we know it when we see it. If you have a specific event in mind, feel free to talk to, to me or to Ben Queenen or to Andrea Rosari. And we'll talk you through whether you need to make a specific proposal or whether you can just go ahead and plan. In terms of news, a little bit more news. So I announced an email that I've been waiting to announce for a long time, which is that we have an incoming Assistant Dean for Diverse and Inclusion, Jermaine Cruz, joining us. Early, he's going to be joining us in October. This is a position that I think we really need. We need at the law school, someone waking up every day, full-time, thinking about how do we continue? How do we become the inclusive community that we want to be? How do we ensure that everyone, faculty, staff and students feels like they belong at Albany Law School? And we've got work to do on that front. And Dean Cruz is ready. If you met him during interview process, I have no doubt that you thought he was just great because he is. He's a big personality, but he's, he's also really smart and really committed and brings a lifetime of experience and really enthusiasm about doing this work and helping us become the community we want to be. So that is really exciting. We've also been really excited to have Judge Leslie Stein join us as our new director of the Government Law Center. Judge Stein is a terrific addition already. She has helped us open doors. We've got a meeting at the governor's office set. So we're really excited to see what, what she does. And she'll be joined by a new deputy director, Patrick Woods, who was a student at the law school. Now I forgot his class was in 2011. He absolutely brilliant and energetic. And the two of them are going to really create wonderful opportunities for our students and really advance the mission of the Government Law Center in helping government work better for people. So really excited to see that happen. And you've also seen, there's been construction out on our, the lawn in front of the 2000 building. Like we called our green space project. It's getting there. It's not quite done yet, but a real nice improvement to our facilities. And much of that, that space is, we, we own half of it, the pharmacy on top of it. But we're all sharing this agreement. So it's space that's available to all of you for events or to go out and play again with Frisbee or whatever might be fun on the green space. I'm excited to see students out there once they've got all the sod down and the construction done. And we'll get you information about how, if you do want to have a special event on the green space, you'll be able to reserve it. And we can, tables and tents. And I have ideas about things, but I, we'd love to hear your ideas about how do we make it most friendly? And if we put out some nice aderent chairs or what, what might be fun and welcoming on the green space? It's nice to have that, that available. So with that, I will, Ben, do we have any questions for me right now? No? Okay. So let me turn it over to Dean Mayer, who is going to talk to you a little bit about exams and getting ready. But you're muted.
I'm out of practice. My Zoom skills have declined. Thank God. So you all should have gotten, students on, on this Zoom meeting anyway, should have gotten an email late last week from Lori Law about our exam procedures for this semester. And so we are going back to in-person exams. That's true for midterms and for final exams. And so she alerted you to the fact that Examsoft, which is the product that we use to take exams, is not compatible with some of the upgrades in Windows. So I'm going to resend that email just to make sure everybody sees it one more time. There are some instructions from IT about what you need to do to go into your system and figure out whether it's going to be compatible or not. If you have any questions, you can email helpdesk and somebody will be available in IT to look at your computer and, and help you do whatever you need to do to make sure that it's compatible. I think the key is for students is just to test drive the, the Examsoft product before you walk into that exam. There's a mock exam that you can take on it so that you can practice how to, you know, how to get into it, how to use the highlighting feature. And there are a lot of features that are involved in it. And so just make sure that before, if, if you're taking midterms with it, make sure before midterms you've, you've gone into it, downloaded it and you've become familiar with it. Same is true for finals. We're using the same product for finals. So I just urge everybody to really try to take one of those practice or mock, mock exams just so that you are sure when you walk into the classroom, you know how to, how to navigate the system. And the other thing that you should have gotten an email about is just the procedure for what happens if on the day of the exam, either you have tested positive for COVID or there's some COVID-related reason or any other illness that you have, even if you've just had to quarantine or self-isolate for a period of time. This, the minute you're aware of that, you should contact the registrar's office via email. And they will make sure that they will reach out to you and let you know that, or talk to you about when you can schedule a makeup exam. So that's true for both midterms and finals. Everything is in person, so we're not doing anything online this semester. So you are going to have to come in and take a makeup, but we can schedule that even last minute if we need to. So just make sure you reach out to the registrar's office to let them know that you're not going to be available to take the exam. And we'll work with you to set it up at a time that is, you know, that, that fits into your schedule.
Thanks, Dean Mayer. Any questions about any of that? No? Okay. Professor Rogerson, what's going on at the Justice Center?
Yeah, I was just on the phone with Lillian Moy of the Legal Aid Society of Northeastern New York, who's hard to get ahold of. Sorry for the delay. Talking about all the good work that we're doing in the Justice Center and our partnerships. The students are in, really the throw of their cases are doing a great job, both our field placement students and our in-house clinics and hybrids. We've got a refugee resettlement project that's going to be running through the Immigration Law Clinic in partnership with loads of student groups on campus, including the Pro Bono Society and affiliated student groups. We've got a training on Friday at four o'clock. Any student can participate in that training to be a part of responding to the refugee crisis to the extent that it has manifested here in Albany. Where, fun fact that I learned, we actually, Afghanistan is one of the top five countries that has historically resettled to Albany, the Albany area. And many thanks to our dean, because we'll be talking with the mayor of the city of Albany to assist with that effort as well. A couple of other things I'll just flag. We're also working with the mayor's office on a ceiling and expungement of criminal records pop-up clinic to be determined in partnership with the Albany County Bar Association, a bunch of other community partners. There will be a small business legal network clinic at the end of October. The Community Economic Development Clinic has tweeted out about that. So that's something that's on your radar. That's, I just wanted to flag that event. And then more broadly, believe it or not, registration is going to be coming up pretty soon. And if you're thinking about taking a field placement or a clinic, or you're advising students who are considering that, tell them to be on the lookout for info sessions, because we're going to start rolling out information through all the different means that we have available at this point at the law school about the different types of clinics and field placement and other opportunities that are available through the Justice Center. And we do that registration just before the general registration. So I want to flag that so that two L's and three L's don't miss out on any opportunity that they would like to have to take a clinic. And I think that's it for us for now. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Now I'll make a pitch for the clinic. If you haven't, if you don't know about our clinics in the Justice Center, they are for most first students that go through them, the most important learning experience they have at Albany Law School. And I really encourage all the students on, on the call or anyone who watches the recording of this to, to check about. And they're great faculty and great opportunity to learn by doing. So any questions for Professor Rogers? Very, I see Professor Jim has his hand up.
Yeah, I did have a question because I was just speaking with a student who I'm advising. I didn't know the answer. So if, like the field placement postings, is that application also through the clinic applications? Like, so they wanted to field place with Judge so-and-so, that's also through the Justice Center application?
Well, there's two issues in your question, Professor Jim. One is the listings and where those are located. And the other is the process question about registration. So on the process question, yes, it all, it all goes through the same process because you can't register for both a field placement and a clinic at the same time. In terms of the listings and where they're posted for clinics, make sure you just check the law school website. The brand spanking new law school website has all kinds of information about our Justice Center in every single clinic that we offer. For the field placements, the particular listings, those are, those go through the same system that you use to access job postings. I always call it CMS, but I know that it has a new name. But it's the exact same system that we use through our Career and Professional Development Center. We try to make that easy for you all. Those listings go live closer to registration. So if you look now, you won't see them. But once you, we get a little bit closer to that date, then you'll likely see those postings pop up so that you can apply to particular field placements. And a third question that you didn't ask, but that often comes up, is can I apply for a field placement and a clinic at the same time? And it really depends. So if that's your situation, we have Nina Repi on the, on the, in the town hall. And her information will be all over the registration materials. You can reach out to her and to any of our excellent administrative assistants. There she is. And they can walk you through what type of field placement versus clinic and whether you can apply for both and which one might be most appropriate for the sequencing of your learning opportunities here at the law school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Dean Haynes, who do you have to report? You're muted.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
That's great. So this is going to be a very, very quick update. I just wanted to keep everyone's, who's listening in on the tape recording, keep everyone's attention on the fact that the online graduate programming space, we have a webinar series on a range of topics in five different academic areas. So we have webinars on human resources, leadership in the law. We have them on cybersecurity and data privacy, on financial matters, healthcare. And also our newest area, government affairs and advocacy, which we're going to be launching as new degree programming space. And then some of the upcoming webinars include a focus on global data privacy laws in particular and blockchain and cryptography and also mental health in the workspace. So you'll see those announcements coming through, maybe the weekly announcements or on the institutional advancement website. But it's definitely a great opportunity to get more education. And once you've completed your JD programming space, you can think about doing a dual degree. Maybe you're looking at the LLM or maybe MSLS. So that's it.
Thank you, Dean Haynes. I see we have with us one of our newest employees, Howie Lee. Howie, do you want to introduce yourself? Welcome to law school. You get called on. Introduce yourself and maybe you can talk a little bit about the alumni membership program.
Sure. So hello, everyone. My name is Howie Leon. I use him as pronouns and I'm the new associate director for alumni engagement and annual giving over institutional advancement. So hello, everyone. I've met many of you already. Pleasure to see some more of you. So hello, everyone. I've met many of you already. Pleasure to see some more faces in our Zoom boxes. You know, I am just getting started. Tomorrow marks my one-month work anniversary at Albany Law School, which is very exciting. So I'm getting the pieces ready for our alumni initiative and mentoring program, getting some feedback from last year's participants who had to do most of it through Zoom, and learning more about what sort of opportunities we have as we come into this kind of ambiguous year, and hoping we can continue some of those initiatives that we launched last year, as well as continue some of the things that we hope to bring back from when the program was fully in person. If anyone has any feedback, I'm more than happy to hear your insights, incorporate those into our strategic planning for the alumni initiative and mentoring.
Great, welcome. And Howie is, for anyone who's a singer, he's going to organize some kind of a cappella. I don't know what he's going to do, but we got a lot of, we're going to have some fun.
That seems to come up in every conversation. I don't mind.
Went to Juilliard, all kinds of talent. So kind of fun to think about what was the music that will make. Jeff Shantz, how are things over at Institutional Advancement? He closed out a $33 million campaign, and are you all done?
I don't know, Dean. Well, you tell me. We're done. I'm really pleased. We debuted our video on Friday, which was nice. And I only mentioned that because so many people on this call helped produce it. So special thanks to the communications team for doing just a really great job. And all the cameo appearances from Professor Jim, Professor Rogerson. Let's see, Professor Rehan is on it and a few others. And so, and a lot of our students too, which is really nice to highlight them. And there's some more to come. We're going to do a Wilkinson video, for student support video, which I think will be really useful. We've got a whole bunch of great stuff happening in the Justice Center, so some really great things to come. So stay tuned.
So is Dean Queenen. How are things in student day?
Things are great. It's nice to have all the students back on campus and been pretty busy. The SBA is now has a full senate, and they are in the process of reviewing requests from student organizations. And so I thought I would also just talk a little bit about our wellness initiative. And I know Sarah Dixon-Morgan, I saw her, and Alex Marie are both on the call. So maybe they can fill in the gaps if I leave something out. But next week is actually Mental Health Awareness Week. So we're going to post some things. The EBA has organized some webinars, so we'll be sharing that. But we also have had a lot going on so far. So Alex Marie has been practicing weekly yoga with us on Thursday mornings at eight, and it's actually been the highlight of my week, every week. I think everyone shares that with me. It's wonderful. She does such a great job. It's for all levels, so don't be shy. We'll either be in the courtyard or under the tent, and when it gets really cold, we'll find another location. But it's been great, and I thank her for doing that. And we started offering weekly walks, so I had to miss the first one yesterday. But I believe Sarah, so Sarah is one of our wellness fellows, and we have a, also Shivani DiMara has joined us as our second wellness fellow. And I believe they led the walk yesterday. I didn't get a chance to follow up with them, but we're going to be doing that every Tuesday at 4:00 PM. So you're welcome. Just pack your sneakers and come meet us outside. And we think that's important to fit that in. It should be really nice. There's also a, we're doing a collaborative 5K with the Running Club. And so look for that, or walking. It could be running slash walking, for those of us that are a little intimidated by running a 5K right now. The other thing I wanted to mention is, this initiative started a few years ago. It was called Lawsuits, where members of our community have donated professional clothing so that students who may not be able to access it, or have time, quite frankly, or the financial means to buy clothing that they might need, can shop what we call the professional closet. So we're doing a shop the closet day. I believe it's on October 6th. It'll be in the Career and Professional Development Center. You can come in, take a look, all free, take what you need. And they have a lot of clothing, I will just say. We had to wheel over a couple more racks. So that should be a really nice addition to the week. I think, missing some, oh, so for those of you who are interested in joining the fitness center at the pharmacy school, we are in the process of formalizing that. It was closed due to COVID, but it seems to be open now. And so we're working out an arrangement so that students can get a reduced rate to use their fitness center. So look for that. I guess the only other thing that I should mention is that Alex Marie, Sarah, and Shivani are all doing these drop-in hours and town halls and time periods where, you know, they're happy to chat with you all. And if you have suggestions on other wellness programs or initiatives, or just want to talk to them and, you know, let them know how you're doing, and ask for support or any type of advice or guidance, they are all here, as am I, to meet with you and see how you're doing. Alex Marie, did I forget anything? And thank you. And Sarah, if you are there and want to chime in, please do.
I don't think you forgot anything, but Alicia, I can feel that you're about to call on me next. Pointed me out so many times.
What would you like to add, Alex Marie? What's going on with, so for people who don't know Alex Marie, she's our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Fellow. And anything that you want to share with the group?
Um, you know, I was thinking while I was sitting here, and I was like, I don't know if much news comes out of my office too often. I have been addressing quite a loaded amount of student concerns around campus involving student-to-student culture primarily, a lot of issues of belonging going on with our students of color and, you know, students who identify with LGBTQ+ community and things like that. And I do kind of want to put it on everybody's radar to maybe be gentle when talking to our more diverse portions of the student body. There's been a lot of, you know, there's a lot of outside things going on still in the world. And a lot of it does trickle on into campus, and social media always the enemy here in terms of, you know, them conflict rising. And it's just, it seems like it's been kind of difficult for some of our students in terms of their mental health and things like that. And so I would encourage our faculty and staff who are here to maybe, you know, take note if you think you have a student who is struggling and could benefit from chatting with me. You are welcome to let me know that. And I officially have had the practice of reaching out to people randomly. It's still difficult for me, but I will do it. And a lot of students I've worked with are doing a lot better with addressing those issues within themselves and with their peers. So it is not the worst idea to send them my way. If you're identifying students who may need some extra support, particularly cultural support, mental health support, I do a lot of resource giving out, connecting students with the best resources for them outside of my personal expertise. Like Rosemary said, I've been working really close with the Wellness Initiative, and that's been great. And on that note, I did want to raise an overall concern that I've been getting from the student body. And I think why they're bringing it to me is because they're afraid to bring it to higher-up leadership, because I, for whatever reason. And that concern is, there is a bit of a looming high-anxiety COVID concern from the students on campus. A lot of our two Ls and three Ls in particular have brought this concern to me. And I think that's because they were, you know, here for our original response to COVID in 2020. And I think what a lot of them are missing, and some of them have explicitly mentioned this, that they're missing that transparency on how the decisions are being made related to COVID. And particularly, a lot of them are curious why hybrid was not a part of this year's academic curriculum. And I've spoken with Rosemary about this personally, but I think it would be beneficial to let the students know how and why that decision was made, because there are a lot of lingering concerns that involve off-campus behavior. For example, a lot of the students do go out on the weekends. You know, they are not necessarily social distancing and wearing masks while they're doing those sorts of things off-campus. Some of our students who have children at home, or who live with people with disabilities, are concerned that they might be sitting near somebody who's asymptomatic, and they're asymptomatic, and they might be bringing that home. There's a good amount of paranoia going on around campus from the student body. And I'm not too sure how to address it personally. I know that concern is getting higher as we get close to the idea of the holidays with people going to visit other family members and then coming back to on-campus for final exams. So I'm not too sure where to go about the issue, but I do know that there's been a lot of student worry. And I can't tell if it's better or worse than their concerns when they're virtual. I don't know which is more taxing on their learning experience. But some of them have been anxious to the point where they've skipped days of school just to like recollect their thoughts on the whole situation. So I do think it would be beneficial to maybe address the student body on why hybrid was not the decision. And just a reminder on all of the, you know, COVID-related policies and why they're in place and how they are beneficial for preventing the spread of COVID. But other than that, I'm personally super excited for Dean Cruz to get here. Oh, I cannot wait to have a partner in crime over in my one-man G.I. office.
Thank you for that, Alex Marie. And if you have people with concerns about COVID, feel free to talk to me or to send them to me. I'm happy to talk to them. It's actually part of why we're having a town hall is to address those specific concerns. And I have had some conversations with students who have asked a question. We wouldn't be in person if we didn't feel that we could do it safe. Our track record is really good, and we know that it's a better learning environment. For particular individuals, there's going to be anxiety, and we can help, and we can work, you know, we can certainly work with folks. So please do send them my way. I will absolutely meet with students who are concerned about those things. And we can walk through what the concerns are and what the layers of protection are. So thank you. Let's see. I do see a couple of representatives, Joanne, Casey, and Dan from the Career Center. Do either of you have any updates or things you want to share?
Sure, I can give an update. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Dan Blanda. I joined the Career and Professional Development Center back in May. I'm also an alumni of the school. I guess where we're at, I kind of will go by class here. For one L students, starting October 1st, they'll be able to make appointments with us. We're going to start meeting with them to talk about their individualized career plans, and we're going to help them draft their first legal resume and cover letter. We've been holding workshops with them up until this point in the late September time. So that's what's going on with the one Ls, with the two Ls, and the three Ls. There's some on-campus interviews that are happening this week and upcoming. There's virtual interprograms, and we're doing resume collect programs. We've had some great participation. On the three L count, we are wrapping up some downstate DA interviews, which have gone really, really successful for this current class. And we're hoping to have some great numbers out of that. One thing I'd really like to mention to the community at large is the jobs and opportunities email that's coming out from us, our office, every Wednesday. We've got a lot of feedback from students that they're finding great opportunities there. We are trying to expand the list serve to pretty much everyone in the community that we can. Right now, it's going to the clinic and Justice Center and to all the class years. But if people are open to receiving it, I can put you on the list serve as well. But I know that we're getting some great attention and feedback. And if you could direct students to that, I think they're going to find some great opportunities there. And I guess that's where we're at. Right now, we have some great programs coming up that you can also check out on Albany Law Link. But thank you, Dean.
Professor Bopington?
Hi, it occurred to me that some students might be wondering whether we're going to have bar prep companies tabling on campus this semester. And the intention is for that to happen. I apologize. It's a little slower in getting together this time. I was away for a couple of weeks, and there's been some shifts in personnel involved in making that happen. And also COVID. We're sort of ironing out the final details there. But we're hopeful that we'll have tabling happen basically as normal, meaning outside the cafeteria at the table underneath the monitor, probably no food or candy being dispensed at those tables this time. But otherwise, normal tabling by mid-October, which would make it only a couple of weeks after when it usually starts. So that's something to look forward to. Stay tuned for further details, including a schedule, which I'll post to the Canvas course admission to the New York Bar for upper-level students.
Thanks, Professor Bopington. How about the library? It's Wesley and Tom. Either of you want to? Anything going on at the library you should know about?
I guess I'll jump in. Let's see, we have a new Justice Equity and Diversity and Inclusion collection of books. When you walk in the lobby, many of those are also available as eBooks. If there are any, well, anyone on this call would be interested. I was going to say first-year students in new courses, but anyone on the call would probably be interested in those. We are continuing to support the school with study space, with research help, faculty support, et cetera. And we just have a new display for National Archives Month in October. So if anyone wants to see the past, you know, see where the school came from, it's also in the lobby next to that book collection. Leslie, did you have anything else to add?
So anyone else that I haven't called on have anything to share? Speak up. Any questions? Ben, did you get any questions?
I just, sorry, I just wanted to mention that in the library, we're all being very cooperative and cautious as far as the health and safety of the staff and students and faculty in the library. I think we're all doing a very good job helping everybody adjust to this climate.
Indeed. Thank you, Wesley. Yeah, thank you for your work on that. The library was really the first to open post-COVID. And so you all have really taken one for the team and shown us how it's done. It's been really impressive how safe it's been.
The only thing I got in the background here is a question on when Dean Cruz is starting. And the dates I have, he's going to be starting on October 20th, I believe, starting remotely. And then he's going to be on campus November 5th.
Starting November 5th.
Yep. And we'll have more on his background on the website soon. We're just trying to get in touch with him.
Yeah, he's moving there from California. He's looking for a place to live. But we know that there's some urgency to getting him, talking to students and staff and faculty. So I'm glad that it'll be started very soon. Nilsa, HR?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I actually just had a comment. I just wanted to, since we have so many key players on this call sharing this caring, we all have such a wide network on LinkedIn. So when you see our postings for job postings, events, in case you missed it, et cetera, sharing is great, because we'll reach individuals across the U.S., obviously, it's free advertisement. And this applies to potential students in our JD and online program faculty and potential employees. So much appreciated.
Thank you. It's a great point.
It might reach someone that might know someone, and you know, that's our new employee. It might reach someone that might know someone and, you know, that's our new employee. So um, you know, any advertisement for us just um, you know, expands our brand. So I thank everyone in advance.
Thanks, Nilsa. Anyone else? Well, we're at at an hour just about exactly, so uh timing is good and that's a lot of time on Zoom. I'll give you one more minute for any last questions. And thank you all for being here and for everything you do uh for each other and our community. Um, it's a special place and I appreciate each and every one of you. And with that, we'll say farewell. Bye-bye.